Call this city council meeting to order at 6:04 PM.
Yes, the date is?
The date is October 27th, 2016. We proceeded this meeting with a budget workshop meeting where we took roll call and had to pledge allegiance, so we do not need to repeat that again. Right to the mayor's report. The park board had a meeting this last Saturday and they appointed a new park board chairman. We can congratulate Polo Totai on his new position. The park board tentatively has another meeting scheduled on Saturday, November 12th at 10:00 AM. If anyone is interested in joining them. The reminder, the annual pre-flood preparation meeting being put on by the Lewis County Department of Emergency Management will be taking place Thursday, November 3rd at 9 o'clock and it goes till noon. And it's at the Veterans Memorial Museum in Schehalis. If anyone's interested in attending that.
What's the date again?
Thursday, November 3rd from 9 to noon. And if I remember correctly, our public works employee has attended before and he says he does not need to attend again. But if anyone else would like to go in his stead, that would be great. Also new this time, Lewis County Department of Public Works, the annual meeting of the Centralia Landfill Closure Group and the Executive Advisory Committee will be held on Thursday, November 10th from 1 o'clock until 4 o'clock in the Lewis County Public Services Building in Schehalis, a large conference room. They will provide information regarding landfill closure matters such as annual payment to the Lewis County Solid Waste Disposal District towards the landfill closure expenses. And we've had a representative go to this before?
We are supposed to have a representative from the city go to those. It's usually just once a year they have this, but they're doing kind of an update this year, so there may be some additional things coming up. But they're doing an update to the plan, I believe. Tim Elsie came a month or two ago and kind of gave everybody a, if you guys remember, he said, "This is coming up. You're gonna see that there's a meeting coming." And he gave us a bunch of information about it, so I have it if you want to see it. But we kind of need to pick somebody to be our representative and to be willing to go to these meetings. This one especially, if we can get someone who can do that.
Yeah, busy day if you went from that from 1 to 4 and then we had our 5 o'clock budget meeting.
That's a Thursday then?
Yes.
So we're supposed to say, "Is anyone willing to go?" The mayor told me to put all kinds of pressure on you guys. Says the guy who doesn't like to put pressure on people.
Jason said you would go.
Really?
Yeah.
I thought I saw Ruth's hand go up. Oh, okay. I'm teasing you.
It's the solid waste department. They are having, the landfill was closed in the 90s, but there were charges associated with closure and different departments have to pay annually towards this. And it's an update meeting about that. It's exciting.
It's interesting. You learn more about garbage than you ever wanted to know.
These guys are passionate about trash, so.
They are.
Lot of money in it.
So, alright, that's enough pressure. Thursday, November 10th from 1 to 4, Schehalis, large conference room, Lewis County Public Services Building. And that's it for the mayor's report. Do we have any council reports? No council reports. Agenda approval.
I approve the city council meeting agenda through 10/27/2016.
We have a motion to approve the agenda as written for today, October 27th, 2016. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ms. Creer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Minutes, minutes approval for our last meeting.
I'll make a motion and we approve the city council meeting agenda. Oh, excuse me. City council minutes from 10/13/2016.
Excellent.
Alright, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes for October 13th, 2016.
May I clarify?
Ruth Creer has made a motion and Andy Wilson has seconded it.
So I may not ask a clarifying question?
You can.
You mean, do you mean the minutes of the council meeting and the public hearing? Yes. Okay, I just want to make sure. I just think that's it.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Voucher approval.
I make a motion to approve the vouchers for the first of October, 2016, in the amount of $24,096.35. End of October, 2016, $35,998.17. October total, 2016, was $60,094.52.
We have a motion from Mr. Wilson to approve the vouchers in the amount of $20,000, excuse me, $60,094.52. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Parsons. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Public comment.
Go on.
Did we have an update from the sheriff's department? Or are you just here for the fun of it? Excellent.
He's just supporting us.
Alright.
Keeping the peace.
Keeping the peace. City business. Item number one. Report on fire investigation services contractor. As you remember, there was some confusion over who was responsible for investigation services within the city. Now that, not only now that we have our own building code department, but in light of the fact that we may never have had fire investigation services even before that with the county.
Officially.
Officially. So, there is currently an inter-local agreement in the works with the city of Schehalis, who has the only fire investigation services in the area. And that is the update.
Perfect. If we're lucky, we'll have a document by the next council meeting.
How long?
We don't know yet. It's on an as-needed basis, so.
So, that is the update. Item number two, council to consider resolution 18-2016 voluntary correction agreement. As you recall, the city had sent out the first six letters, was it correct? The first six letters to residences or properties within the city to, for cleanup or, and other, and violations of our building codes. And this one particular resident has requested some additional time and has been very receptive and very willing to do all the things necessary. And if I remember correctly, they were, they were a bit embarrassed of the situation. And so, they have been very receptive. And so, this document in front of you should take care of all the needs.
Basically, they've completed everything that's been required with the time extension and they have paid for the cost of providing this document, all the legal fees and everything. They've paid, they've done everything. They're completely.
And that's the, what, $250?
Yeah, that's the $250. And so, they've done everything we've asked within the timeframe at the extension and they're completely compliant and so.
That's great.
We just need to, your guys' approval for the mayor to sign off and say.
So all six of the people that you sent these to got a $250?
No, no. This is when, so they, so six people got notices that there were violations on their property. Two of them, we've not heard anything from. And so, I'm kind of giving you a code enforcement update, even though that's later on. But two of them did not respond at all. They did receive the certified letters and sign for them. So, we are going on with the next step, which is the violation order, which basically is, okay, we gave you time, we gave you an opportunity, you could have appealed, you didn't. So, now our next step is to sue. You better get a hold of us or we're gonna have to sue you. And so, that's kind of where we're at with those two. The other four, one has completely cleaned up their property within the timeframe, what we required of them. Three of them asked for additional time. This is one of them. This one asked for additional time and we explained to them that that was possible with this kind of an agreement that they would have to pay for, so they agreed. And we went ahead and put that together. In the meantime, their time, they didn't need a big time extension, so they actually ended up completing it before the contract was even finished, being written. But they've paid for it, they've done everything that we've asked them to do. And so, this is kind of just a technicality at this point, because they've done everything that has been needed. So, this one needs to be signed. There's two others that are still in the process of working on, that needing additional time and we are trying to finalize those, what's called VCA voluntary correction agreements as well. And you will see those in the near future coming through as well. But they're asking for a little bit more time, so theirs aren't totally complete as quickly as these people did.
And so, do everyone that asked for more time get a fine of the $250? I don't know where the $250 came in.
Oh, the $250 comes from the cost, the legal cost that it costs our attorney to put this voluntary correction.
So that each and every one that gets these gets that fine?
If they want a time extension, there, it's explained to them that they, it's not a fine. It's, they have to pay for whatever it costs us. Some, well, some people, like one gentleman is not being as cooperative and is requiring our attorney to spend more time. And so, the fees aren't gonna be more expensive for him, because he keeps sending the document back and wanting things changed. And, okay, we'll work on it, but he understands that this is gonna cost him more. Whatever it costs the city to pay the attorney to put that together is what they have to pay. So, $200 is about the average. If they have questions or there's problems or things that have to be changed, it takes a little bit more time to research those and do them, and so that's added on. So, whatever it costs, they've agreed to the costs. And so, they'll have to pay those back to the city so that it doesn't cost the city, because they want more time, so.
Well, what about all those up on F Street area?
That's coming up on number six.
Wait for it.
It's coming.
We'll talk about it. No spoilers here.
Yeah.
We have a question. Does the council like to hear a question from you?
On the voluntary correction agreement, I'm questioning B, is this something the city can develop?
Yep.
And is it a generic one that went to everybody?
No. Just specific to just particular property? Right.
Demolish and remove the residential building or?
No.
Including, there's no or there. Let's see.
Or secure the building and boarding up the windows and doors?
I guess I question our, I guess I question the fact that we as a city, we tell somebody to remove the building, the residential building.
We're telling them that they either have to remove the building or secure it. That's their choice.
But to board the windows?
If they choose to secure the building, that's fine. Basically, it needs to be safe. And in order to, if the house is left vacant, this is the way it's been explained to me. If the house is left vacant, then it becomes, over a long period of time, it becomes attractive. And as long as it stays secure and the glass is good and nobody tries to break in, you can leave it that way. However.
Board it up?
No, unboard it up, as long as it's not broken into. But once the glass gets broken, you have to board it up, board up the glass or whatever. And this particular people chose to just board everything up, so they don't have to worry about it and secure it, so no kids, animals, drugies, whatever, can get in.
Okay, well, the only problem, I'm sorry, the only problem I have with that is that makes all of our property value go down.
It still looks terrible.
When we have all of the, that's the third one in town now that we've got boarded and the two over by me have been boarded up for two years or three years. So, I find it very offensive that we as a city are gonna allow all of these people to come in and board these up for whatever length of time it takes them to do whatever it is they're gonna do. That's my comment.
Unfortunately, that's the state law. We can't require them to demolish it unless it's in such a state that it's too dangerous and you can't board it up and make it safe. That's the only time we can require them to demolish it. We can require them to make it safe. And that's the, I hate, I hate to say it, but that's the code that you approved and signed up as a council member. I mean, that's state code.
No, that wasn't the one that we signed up, that was the one that's gonna come into effect.
No, no, this is state code.
Yeah.
The state was adopting international.
We had no opportunity to change.
Yeah, it was state.
It was already in the code before that. It's been in the code for years, so unfortunately, it's just part of the state code that we can't change.
Give it up.
I, um, just heard from Jason.
I actually, I agree that we need to authorize this and get this contract signed. So I want to make a motion that we, as a council, allow the mayor to go into this contract with this person in order to get this formality taken care of.
We have a motion from Mr. Daley to approve resolution 18-2016.
My second.
Would you mind reading the title? That's helpful for.
This one here?
Yeah.
Resolution, the city council, the vader, authorizing the mayor to execute in voluntary correction agreement.
Thank you.
We have a second from Mr. Parsons. This time for discussion. We have a question from the public. Would you like, care to hear it? Ms. Sorden?
I have two questions. I want to make sure you understood this. The boarding up of the windows is not a vader decision, it's a state of Washington. So it would have to be changed through the state of Washington, where that would no longer be acceptable. Is that a state law or a city law?
We adopted the state.
Code.
Code.
Okay.
So that's what we use.
Okay.
So boarding it up is what we've adopted. But it doesn't have to be boarded up unless it's broken into or the glass is broke. They can replace the glass, but if it's, access is into it, it needs to be secured.
Is that the verbiage though in that? Is the verbiage in there as far as explaining how to, if somebody was to read that and say it has to be boarded up, is that what it said, boarded up?
It.
It's in the state code. And how it's, how it's stayed in there, I'm not sure, but it's explained.
And my second question, because I want to make sure you understood this. The person isn't, doesn't have the additional expense of the $250 if they comply. But if they challenge it, then the legal costs are on them. Is that, do I have it straight?
If they challenge it.
If they challenge it.
If it goes past the due date of when it is supposed to be done.
We gave everybody a month to comply with the, like, cleaning up, cleaning up weeds and things like that. And then we gave them two months if they needed to do something with the building. We gave them more time. If they didn't feel like they could make it in that amount of time, then they requested additional time, then that's when they were informed that they would have to pay for whatever legal fees it costs the city to do that. That we would do it for them, but they would have to defer in the cost.
And are there any kind of like programs for suppressed people in order to like digging to, to help them? Maybe, because I know that there's people that aren't able to take care of their.
Right.
Their next door house that they moved out of into this house and that one's falling down and they just, is there?
I am not aware of any. Oh, that doesn't mean there aren't any. I, I don't know of any. I'm, I would think there's gotta be some. I know, like, Veterans Relief Fund has contacts, there's Senior Services, might be places to go to look for, you know, elderly people who need help with their homes on fixed incomes, the churches and stuff. But as far as, like, well-known government-funded things, I have no idea about.
But we've got to get some of this junk cleaned up and downed, because it degrades every other property owner that wants to keep it properly nice. But we've got so much junk around here that it's getting pathetic. It's more than I've ever seen in my whole life living in vader.
Well, we saw four get better. Four of the six have gotten better, so we're working on it.
It's a work in progress. Is there any further discussion?
How long, how long are we here with some of these people that don't comply?
She just said, she just said they got a month if it's weeds and stuff like that and two months if it's on their building.
Okay. Like if the building has to be demolished, they get another month.
Alright, so all in favor of resolution number 18-2016, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Report on the completion of street paving project. So, 10th, 10th Street was paved by Northwork last week. There were a couple of items that they're gonna come back out tomorrow, tomorrow and brush up on. There were some, some lips between the top of the road service, surface and people's driveways. And there were some water valve connections where they didn't level the street, they just dipped it down. And they're gonna come back and they're gonna be fixing all those for us.
They're not doing the water valve thing.
They're not doing the water.
We are doing the water.
That's right, we're doing the water.
They're gonna do the driveway, F Street, and then by the mailbox.
Yeah. Yeah, perfect, yes.
Is there any way that we could come along, get some more money to widen that street out a little bit?
How wide do you want it? What are you driving?
Your budget here. You find, you do it. Your budget.
I realize that, but several times I went by his place, somebody else is coming the other way, I have to stop or they have to stop so we can get by. 14 feet isn't enough. I, I don't remember voting for 14 feet, but I thought it was 20 feet at least.
No, they were just gonna keep the roadway the same width. They just kept it the same, the same.
So. Anyway, that's what I didn't like. They've done a good job. But people parking it down at the other end of the street here and I have to park here so some of us, one was gonna have to get by. It was just enough room.
Yeah.
I was just wondering if.
I don't think that it was, I don't think it was that big of an issue before, but now that it's.
Now that there's a lip.
A lip on the side?
Yeah, that's.
I've gone off of it a couple of times going, whoa.
We're gonna peel that off if we don't get a shoulder on there. It's just gonna peel.
Well, that's what I mean. I gotta, whoever who it is, you gotta drive off the.
Yeah.
The lip for, somebody can't buy it.
Pushing, doing a gravel.
Gravel on the sides.
So that when two cars do go by at least.
That's what they did when they resurfaced for silvability.
We have a statement from the audience. Yes, public?
Joe, are you in reference to the intersection there at Ninth and E Street?
Ninth and E, no.
Cause that, when they did that, that valve assembly there was way down and I.
Oh, 10th, 10th and, 10th and E.
10th and E, okay.
Yeah, yeah, they're, that's gonna get fixed.
Okay.
That's on the list.
Pretty scary.
Yeah, it was a little, little odd there.
Yeah, okay.
I almost got stuck. I'm just kidding.
Alright, well, that's the report out. And so, yeah, that should be getting taken care of tomorrow and then we can see the improvement after that. Council to consider dates for emergency preparedness meeting. Jill, would you like to talk about that?
So your calendar that I gave you, let's see, where's my calendar? So, you guys agreed to have the emergency preparedness, the public outreach meeting in January sometime. And so, the mayor worked with Dossie Wilson, the representative who was gonna provide the meeting. And it looks like the week of January the 15th. Oops, I put a star on the 15th. It's supposed to be on the 16th. She was available that week, either Monday the 16th, Wednesday the 18th, or Thursday the 19th. And the mayor said his druthers, his preference would be the 19th, but it was up to council, he, any day, any of those three days would be okay.
How long does she need? Or how long would it be, you know?
Um, that I don't remember.
So like an hour before?
It's not, no, and it's not anything that council is required to participate in. This is a meeting that she had, wants to encourage the public to get more prepared and she'll have information and things to do to work together with your community members in order to be more prepared and things that you can do on a personal level. So it's basically just providing a lot of information to the public. And it's not a council meeting, it's not an official meeting of any, of that kind. It's just you, whoever from the public wants to come and learn about this stuff and get more information. She's, she's trying to help small communities especially be more prepared and the people in the communities be more prepared. And so, this is just, this is not on a council meeting. Ninth, that week, there are no council meetings, so.
I would estimate a couple hours according to her package.
Yeah.
I like keeping things on a Thursday. I think things simple.
I like Thursday as well.
I'll third that.
So do we have to make a motion on this date or anything?
Not necessarily. You can if you want, but it's not necessary. If everybody agrees, yeah, let's do it Thursday, the 19th. We're scheduling it, so she can start advertising.
I wish it was like Thursday, Friday, the 13th, but.
That'd be awesome. You could choose that, see if she's available.
Probably did not choose that, but.
Have someone hook some fuses off all of it.
If you did that on Friday, 13th, you might get more people on the 19th.
So 19th? 19th, thank you. Alright, we have 19th as a consensus.
The time has not been set yet. It's Thursday, it will be in the evening.
We want people to be able to get here after work, so.
Alright, moving right along. Number five, update on stop sign installation. The stop signs are here in the city's possession. They were sent to us a little late, but they are here now and our public works employee is back and he'll be getting them installed shortly.
And we have the change of road.
Traffic revision ahead and flags and everything, so we have everything. So now he just, hopefully this next week he'll want to get.
I know, I remember there was an accident on A and D right there after we, there was just one stop sign, so.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
So, yeah, where the new stop signs go up, there will be the warnings ahead.
My, I don't know, my neighbors will be happy, the church will be happy.
Alright. So, item six, report on code enforcement activity. As you heard earlier, the next batch of six letters have been sent out to residents that are in violation of our city ordinances. And you said, Julie, so we're starting to hear back already from some of them?
I, yes, we have heard back from two today, so that's been good. And it's not appropriate to say where these places are, but if council wants to know specifically, you're welcome to come in to city hall and I will tell you privately.
Excellent. Any questions? Alright. Last item on the list, number seven. Council to cons, consider, consider resolution nineteen dash twenty sixteen A W C R M S A agreement. This is something we always have in place, we just need to renew our contract. A W C R M S A is our insurance company. Jill, would you like to say anything else about that?
There, no, it's pretty pro forma. It's something we have to update with them every couple of years, so around this time.
This is the guy that came and talked?
And bored you to death, yes.
For forty-five minutes or something like that?
Well, he's part of that company, yes. It's our risk pool.
Telling you why you can't have things at your party?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That guy.
We've almost got to have it.
Yeah, so we have to. We don't do it, then we gotta find another insurance company, so.
So, let's make a motion that we approve resolution nineteen dash two thousand sixteen, approving the interlocal agreement with the Association of Washington Cities Risk Management Service Agency and, and its members.
I second it.
We have a motion from Mr. Daley to approve resolution nineteen twenty sixteen. We have a second from Mr. Wilson. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. And we have a question at the end.
I wanted to do it before you threw the bell.
Alright.
Are you through?
Yes.
Are we going to have any, since we're doing this big cleanup thing, are we gonna have any of those cleanup recycling people come to town this year at all? In the past, we've had-
Like at the school where the goat-
Yes, we've had the recycling paper thing, we had the paint, we had-
Tires.
Metal tires, you know, all kinds of stuff.
They did not have funding to provide that this year, so.
Is that a county thing that?
It's provided by the county, solid waste and recycling. They, they get grant money to, to do those kind of projects. They didn't have any this year.
If you're interested in it, I'm sure if you went to this Thursday, November tenth-
That's right!
Public Works landfill closure group, there would be great contacts there for you.
There would be great.
What was the date again on that?
Thursday, November tenth, from one to four o'clock in the large conference room at the Lewis County Public Services Building.
That's the one by Yard Birds.
Real quick, I know it's not on the agenda, but I wanted to ask you guys. I've been planning on building a, I don't know what it's actually called, but it's like a food box that people can put food into and anybody can come and grab food. And it's just a, it's, it takes after the, the, like the li, the book sharing boxes. But I saw this on the internet and this lady built a box for food sharing. So eggs or whatever goes in this and then people can come and get it. And it's not even a, necessarily a needy thing, but, or I just don't have time to run up to Chehalis to get a cup of sugar or whatever. So it's kind of a, a food spot for people to go and, and you can donate to it or, or not. I was just wondering of a place to put it. And, and then I was gonna talk to the mayor about putting it in-
I'll take it in my front yard.
Your front yard?
Put a food box out there. I'm a bachelor.
It'd always be empty.
Alright, if you have any suggestions, please get with Mr. Parsons about that.
Yeah, I didn't know if it was something that we should put, that we could put here at city hall or if we wanna put it by the post office or-
Put it on the next agenda?
Or if we put it on the next agenda.
Department say about something like that though?
Yeah, that's the other thing.
Every Wednesday, we have one at the post office.
Yeah, yeah.
The church has, the whole guys are food they get away.
Can you check with the health department and see somebody, Mike, since it's-
Yeah, I'll, I'll check with it. It's become, it's actually become like a worldwide-
I've seen it.
Yeah, thing, so I thought, oh, that'd be a good thing.
Would you like it on the agenda next time?
Sure.
Alright. If that's the end of the ad hoc discussion, we can close this meeting at six forty P M.
If you got any candy, I'll take it.
Thank you and good night.